All right, so regularly scheduled meeting at the St. Hill's Board of Education like an order. We have lots of folks with us today, which is awesome. First thing to do is to approve the agenda on the screen. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Second? Hall of favor? Dr. Freeman.
Right. Thank you all for coming tonight, the last week of school. It's an exciting time because we've got a lot to be proud of in our schools and here you are, students, to celebrate that. So we'll go, kind of go in order to try to best move the crowd around as everybody's here. But our first group is our JV cheerleaders, who are our national champion cheerleaders. Coach Kim Witness here. Kim, come on up. I want you to tell us all about what they accomplished, I believe it was in February, what this group has only its second year?
Yes.
All right, take it away.
Second year.
All right, take it away.
They qualified at regionals at the, at the north, no, at the southern regional championships for UCA. They qualified to, and they actually won that championship. So they qualified to go to Orlando to compete in the national high school cheerleading championships in the game day division. And they had to compete in the prelims first and did quite well, but they were only in about third or fourth place at that time. So they knew they had to do really, really good, do their best in the championships to actually win it. And they did, did quite a bit better and were crowned the national champs for the second year in a row.
Should have each of them introduce themselves.
Well, I can introduce them, I guess. Greer Bowlin, stand up and turn around. Gracie Lee. A.C. Worrell. Peyton Higdon. Julia Ann Bratton. Emma Grace Nix. Katherine Christian. Abby Ford. Caroline Crane. Sophia Willey. Julia Lucas. Sarah Leon. Emery Crane. Braylon Bruce. And Mary Claire McGee. There's a few that we're seeing that have not been here, but that's, they did a great job.
You certainly started a fine tradition that the rest of these teams behind you had to step in and you've continued the tradition of competing at the highest level and that's what we love to do in the St. Hill City Schools. So congratulations. What grades?
These are ninth and 10th graders.
Everybody's ninth and 10th grade.
Ninth and 10th grade.
Okay, so fantastic. Well, you're leaving a great legacy for the next JV squad. All right, congratulations. Now, look, you can stay. You can walk out, whatever you'd like to do.
We were gonna let soccer.
Can do that, we're gonna bring soccer in.
Thank you all so much.
Well, what do you say? Just to keep the tradition of excellence going in soccer this year, Coach Meadow and her team won what is now our sixth state championship in ladies soccer. That's outstanding. Congratulations. This is all impressive, but the other things about this are, to me, you did not lose a game all season and I think we gave up, was it less than 10 goals?
Nine goals, scored 90 and allowed 9.
In 23 games, 90 allowed 9. So the goalie, where is she? You didn't have any mess, what do you do?
Do what?
Are you either block a lot or you just watch a lot?
Hey, I mean, they give it up a few times. Too much of you think.
She's not big, I mean, it's hard when you don't get a lot of shots and you have to come up big.
Yeah, we had a semifinal game, you made some good, I'm not sure what you call it, but you stopped the ball from going anywhere. When the game was close there, so anyway, so we're 23-0. This is the second, this is consecutive state championships. That was impressive in itself, the six and all this. Max Prep has said that this is our national champion soccer team as well. And that's it. So Bridgette Meadows has been leading this program for a long time. I went out on a Monday morning about 7 o'clock, I don't remember if we were out of school or something, but the girls at 7 o'clock were going at it really hard and I thought no wonder we were winning. No one in school's out doing that. So in the course of all this, I appreciate the humbleness she takes on about this, but Bridgette was 1-0, her 300th game during the course of the season, added a few more after that, which is a monumental accomplishment, I think, in high school athletics. So congratulations, Coach Meadow, for that. Would you like for you to introduce the team, your assistant coaches and your helper?
Right. This is my student.
Tell us about our squad.
No, I was gonna tell you a little bit more about our season. So not only did we finish undefeated, we were the only undefeated team in the entire state from A to A. So, and then, so, and we were the only undefeated team in the southeast region. So that's why Max Prep picked us first. And also USA Today picked us, gonna bump us first too, because the first, the teams ahead of us both lost in their semi, in their state final game. That's just how hard it is to go undefeated season. Also, they've made, they broke records as far as, they had the most consecutive wins in the state of any team. So that's 29 wins in a row since last year as well. And also the seniors, all the, you know, the seniors, all they know is going to the finals every year. Because the last four years, we've been to the state finals and we've won three of the four. We got second one year, but, um, so that's, that's part of the accomplishment. These seniors had 87 wins, seven losses and two ties. So that's, that's an outstanding group of seniors that haven't do all that. So that's pretty amazing. So here we go, this is Carl, Caroline, Georgia, Anna, Catherine, this is always making me nervous, Christina, Anna, Grace, sorry, Queen, Gracie, Riley, sorry. Gracie, Molly, Arden, Katie, Izzy, Coach Thompson and Coach Carol. This is, Coach Thompson and Coach Carol both played for me. Coach Thompson was on my first group, played for me, she's a freshman, I was the first year of Coach at the state. And Coach Carol played for me and she just graduated from Watford, which is where I went and played, and she played soccer there as well. So it's really nice to have a group of coaches that, you know, have the same principles or the same goals and mentality that I have. And so anyway, this is your 2019 state champion team.
Board members, anything you want to add to this?
It's incredible. Very proud of y'all. Yeah, it's awesome. Thank you.
I have to say that what I thought was a stamp of, we're in charge and we're gonna win this game, was somebody toward the middle of this group, which we remain anonymous, got the yellow cards relating to second half, but I, what I, yeah. The message y'all, the message y'all saw out there is that we own this field.
That's right.
So we put the stamp of approval on that. That's good stuff. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. We got We The People up next. Come on in, bring your, bring your crew. Okay, Ms. Maddox, this is We The People, and everybody knows about We The People. If you don't, you should. This is a perennial powerhouse in the state in the We The People competition. And we, we won the state championship this year and this is how many?
Every year since 2005?
Yeah, that's pretty good. Yeah, so state champions since 2005 again, congratulations, We The People team. Ms. Maddox, share a little bit about this team and introduce all of them to us.
Okay, I'll actually let them introduce themselves in just a minute. So this is our team for this year. We had 14 kids on the team this year and you need 18 really to have the minimum number on each of the six units. So we had four students who had to double up this year, so it was a lot of work for this team. They worked really hard all year. These are some of our best and brightest seniors, we're very proud of their efforts. And where other seniors get to have senioritis second semester, this crew does not. They keep working all the way through August or through April. And they did that this year and did really, really well at nationals. We brought home the southeast regional award, we're super proud of them for that. And I'm gonna let them introduce themselves to you in the same way that they would if this were competition. So they'll tell you who they are, where they're going to school, what they hope to major in. So we'll start here.
Hi, my name's Rattika Samat. I'll be attending UAB this fall as part of their MSAB or Early Medical School Acceptance Program and I'll be majoring in neuroscience as well as Spanish.
Hey, I'm Abby Ronson. I'm going to Auburn University, double majoring in political journalism and political science.
Hi, I'm Sophie Borden. I'll be attending the University of Georgia studying psychology and political science.
My name is Julia Holmes. I will be attending George Washington University, majoring in international affairs and concentrating in security policy.
Hi, my name is Ellis Zhang. I will be attending Auburn University and majoring in biochemistry.
Hey, I'm Rizwan Todd. I'll be attending UAB, majoring in neuroscience.
Hi, I'm Libby Jackson. I'll be attending the United States Coast Guard Academy, majoring in government.
Good afternoon, my name is Julia Stewart and I will be attending the University of Alabama next year to study both biology and political science.
Good afternoon, my name is Rohit Veri Bhandi. I'll be going to the University of Alabama at Huntsville studying computer science.
Good afternoon, I'm Sam Swenson and I'll be going to George Washington University and studying political science.
Hi, I'm Nikki Pedacord. I'll be going to Rhodes College and I'll be studying history and a pre-law track.
I'm Malthur John, I'll be attending Brown University, concentrating in computer science. And our sponsors are, this Amy Mack.
I couldn't be here. She's heading up to the soccer banquet, so.
I would say that this is, I wish every student could participate in this, every citizen. The adults need this, what they, what they go through and what they learn about constitution. We really could use a good dose of that in our nation about constitution and how it's interpreted and they're just an exceptional group. And if you go to scholarship awards or different things, they're doing a lot more than just this. That's what to me makes them so impressive. They do so many more things and it's nice to celebrate that and what they've done. They represent us very well. Congratulations. Boys tennis team, I'm thinking that's just good looking guys up here. Come on up. Chris Miles, be with us. Well, in a pretty dramatic set of events on the last day of tennis, our boys won the tennis state championship. Congratulations, guys. Chris Miles, you can tell us about all of that, the drama that took place and just introduce your folks for us.
We, we had a great season. We were 14-1 in duels, undefeated against all in-state competition, head-to-head against another team, the only match we lost was up in Chattanooga. Won our section tournament, qualified, top out of our section. Also went down to Auburn and beat the top qualifiers the last tournament, in-season, regular season. Won our state, section tournament, traveled to the state tournament, kind of put our heads down, did the best we could do. Had a great couple of teams leading up to it. We were third place three years ago, second place last year and this year, thanks to a little bit of help from some other guys, but mainly these guys, we ended up being state champions.
I've got Drew Castleberry, I've got Jack Nelson, I've got sophomore Cole Spain, Danny Wheeler, I've got shooting, well, rising senior Thomas Wade, rising senior Ethan Arington. Ethan was a state champion at, uh...
Two doubles.
Yeah, two doubles. There we go, I had to think through it, now I'm getting nervous up here. And Danny was his doubles partner right there, so these guys were state champions at two doubles. Kyle Morris is a freshman, we had Peter Malouf, he was a freshman this year. Patty Malouf, Peter's the older brother. Sam Smith, George Smith, champion of three singles and three doubles and Jack, uh, Jack Kimbrough, champion of three doubles as well.
Ethan Strand was, for his annual appearance. I want to read this so I don't mess it up. Ethan's a sophomore and he was a state champion last year in some events. He's a state champion, three-time state champion this year. So he swept the distance races in 7:80. So he won the 1600 meters in 4 minutes 18 seconds, the 3200 meters in 9 minutes and 21 seconds, and the 800 meters in 1 minute and 54 seconds. Three event state champion. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fantastic. I have to catch my breath, just calling out. Coach, we're bragging, we're gonna leave that, I think, a blessing to say about.
Well, you know, everybody's celebrating all of these accomplishments and I was just thinking, we were the last year, as the first time for our program for a freshman to win two events last year. And so this year, since then, cross-country champion, the mile, champion in indoor, and also a medalist in 32. But then what's special about spring is, because we, you know, talk about national champions here, but what's special I'd like to share with us is Ethan was working through, adding events to his, you know, to his event schedule. In the state, we have three days, so you know, it's, it's a process he was working through in a short period of time, the way the season played out. And we had some good conversations about, you know, how that would affect the team if we changed things around, didn't run a relay and then ran four events at state. Anyway, long story short, he, he saw the challenge and he was working through it and he's, and at the end of the day, he, he went for it. And what's really special about that decision process was at the state meet, his very last event, there's a lot we could talk about, but, but he, he got a walk, not a walk, he qualified automatic at sectionals, so he just tried to get there. When we got to state, he was ranked 11th out of that group of boys, maybe 16 or so. Anyway, so he's in ninth position at the, the second lap on the last, last corner. And then he, as we talked about last year, he has this special instinct and there's something real special about this guy when he races. And he just took the whole field out and kept the fastest time this year for the 800, I believe. And then definitely the 7:80 fastest time, but it's real special. But what's really, really, really special is we've never had a runner-up in outdoor track. We, we won in '08 with a special group, we won by one point against Hoover. And this story is what he was able to do, but then we have about, like you said with tennis, we had seven or eight events where it came down to the last road, the last jump, all kinds of stories that I could spend an hour telling you about. And so we ended up getting our first runner-up ever for history and, for outdoor track. So.
Yeah, so what is it you love so much? I mean this, and you're passionate about it. What is it you love that draws you to run this way?
Um, I guess, I mean, I just, once you do something, you just kind of love it. And then teammates, always make new friends.
So when did this, when did this start, this passion, first moment that, yeah, when did this start?
Very early. We never had him making runs, he always wanted to be timed, run around the yard. It started very early.
So, so special.
Dr. Freeman, my daughter is his age and like in fifth grade or fourth grade or sixth grade, there was some like women, you know, in the community, like the 5K or something like that, and I was waiting for her at the finish line and you had smoked all these like grown men. And grown men are coming across the finish line going, who is that kid? So he's been doing this a long time and impressive, impressive well.
Congratulations, very special, Coach, you were very special. The runner-up this year is, I weigh 56 points.
About 62.5.
How many of those points did you get?
Half of them.
Take those. Thanks for being here, Coach. All right. Austin, Austin, come again, let us know. Go on up, Austin. All right. Austin is here today because he is a low medalist in 7:80 boys golf this year, so I mentioned the state champion in the individual golf for 7:80. Congratulations. So you've been golfing a little while, I understand you've been pretty good for a long time. So you're gonna take your talents somewhere, right?
Yes, sir, I'm going to Auburn.
Okay, you're gonna play there?
Yes, sir.
If there's a national championship in the making for the Tigers.
Hopefully, hopefully, yes, sir.
Coach, go into test a little bit about Austin.
All right, so the, we make it to state championship, Prattville, RTJ Campbell Hill, just a really tough course, we'd never played before and the conditions that day, the wind completely switched up. Well, Austin, coming in the first day, was 2-under, threw 12, had a great round going and just, they have this goofy golf hole, it has this huge tree in practically the middle of the fairway that every golfer has to hit it, has to hit it. So he hits into it and the ball doesn't come out. It literally stayed up in the tree. So we had to go back and re-team. So he has to play the hole out, but the two-stroke penalty gets a double on him, so he's back to even. So he could have really just made a decision, man, that was an unfortunate break, I can just pack my bag, you know, just kind of call it. And he goes back and gets three pars and a birdie to end the rounds and he gets the 1-under. And he's two off the lead, which was kind of ironic. Well, the next day, the conditions were even worse and he just said, the heck with this, I'm gonna go out and I'm just gonna try and get every single birdie, not just for myself, but for my team. And that's kind of the character and the leadership that he's shown all year. Whether it's, you know, we're showing up at a tee box at 2:30, he's gonna be there at 2:00. He wants to make sure he's always there first, he's the last one to leave. It's the kind of kid he is. Earlier in the year, we played the Joe King Memorial and he gets in a three-man playoff for the, for the individual low and has it won, misses a putt, so it keeps going. Goes four more holes later and still finds a way to win. Well, the next day, that second day, he goes 4-under and we get to the last tee box. And this is so cool, we get to the last tee box. And I'm, I'm trying to tell him, hey, you're up by like three or four, so you got this. Chill, just get a par. And he comes up to me and he's like, I just need one more birdie, Coach, one more birdie. We, our team needs it, our team needs it. You know, and like golf is such an individual sport, but he was thinking about the team. And I think that's so special and I think that's gonna be something that he carries with him to Auburn and I think Auburn's gonna have it as the gem of a player and I can't wait to keep track of his future endeavors and I'm just, just been proud and it's been a blessing to be able to coach him.
Austin, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Dr. Freeman, I think it needs to be noted too, Austin's currently golfing, he's getting a full rise playing golf, so. And you, and you didn't just get this offer to you, right?
Yes, sir.
That offer came when?
Uh, freshman, freshman year, it's for Austin.
Sure got, I'll take it pretty good then. Mr. Boone, do you think you could take him?
I was telling him when I walked in, I said, Austin, let's play a few holes and I'll show you how not to do it.
Thank you. Thank you all, appreciate it. Okay, we will move to consent items now and I recommend the board approve consent items related to out-of-state and overnight field trips.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Hall of favor?
Under business, I'd like to start with item A and recommend the board approve the conveyances of property at Bestave Hills Elementary-Cohava Heights School, consistent in terms of the memorandum of understanding with the city of Bestave Hills, approved by the board on February 25, 2019.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Questions, commentary?
Ask Mr. Downs, he's here today, thanks for coming, Jeff. He's got a work session, so we moved him up on the agenda to, to a grill job and ask him to just go over the bits and the particulars of this, so he can be for sure as a reminder of what we talked about.
I have three slides to show. The first one, it is the one on the master plan. This board and our city council agreed, as was referenced in the introductory comments, into a memorandum of understanding that set forth a series of actions that would be mutually beneficial between the board and the city of Bestave Hills. The first of those whole series of actions are coming, is coming forth right now as we are completing the bid process for totally reworking the baseball fields in the athletic complex at Cohava Heights, behind Cohava Heights Elementary School. That master plan document is, is shown here on the screen and it involves totally demolishing the existing ball fields, creating some community park space, creating additional parking and ultimately moving the numerical house to the back part of the property as a senior center in Bestave Hills. With that coming up now for bid this next week and as we look to the month of June to hopefully give a notice to proceed for construction, we can't construct on property we don't own. So the next slide, which is a, the overall view, it would be that, the bottom one right there, shows what the ultimate desire is, it's again, consistent with the MOU. It shows all of the property along the Dolly Ridge side becoming board of education property and the property in the rear of the, of the site becomes the city's property in addition to what will be parking and the new senior center in this area right there. Please note, there's also shared access agreements and a public access road to serve both the school and the ball field. To accomplish this, because this property was acquired as a part of the annexation of Cohava Heights, there were some really irregular property lines. And so there's a series of legally described pieces of property that need to be conveyed between the two entities, if you'll go to the next, the conveyance map. And what you'll see here is a, in highlighted in color, a series of these different conveyance parcels that begin with where the numerical house is, that would be conveyed from the city to the board for whatever future use. And ultimately, when the new senior center is built, that building would be demolished and that land would be used for the school board for whatever purposes you see fit. The blue area is a conveyance parcel that the city currently owns and that you, you all built a, a road across and that is gonna be conveyed for whatever purpose, educational purpose that you see fit. Then you have the conveyance parcels to the north side that the school board would convey to the city for the purposes of a public road in yellow. And sort of that rust color, that would be conveyed from the school board to the city so we, we could build parking, consistent with our plan, and the senior center. And then there would be the conveyances on the rear part of the property to allow the access. All of these are, are spelled out into a document that Mr. Boone drafted, again, consistent with that MOU. If you approve tonight, then I can present that concept to the city council for their potential approval at our 6 o'clock meeting tonight. And so I believe it's ripe for you, for your consideration.
Mr. Boone, anything, you want to say, the particulars of the conveyance?
Um, nothing other than Dr. Freeman and Mr. Downs and myself met early last week to discuss the contents of the land swap agreement and the exhibits. And I think it accurately reflects the MOU that both the city and the board approved on February the 25th. And part of that MOU says, it had a litany of things that the board and city agreed to, land swap is just one of them. And the MOU said, in general terms, that a more formal document to implement these items that have been agreed to will be done. And the land swap agreement is the agreement limited solely to the conveyance of the seven parcels, three by the city to the board, four by the board to the city, plus an access and parking shared easement agreement. And I would just guess that in the future, as the board and city need to implement the other items in the MOU, that we will have probably five or six more of these formal agreements to accomplish what you agreed to in very general terms.
All right, hall of favor? Alright, all in favor? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, appreciate that. Item B, I recommend the board approve in 2019, 20, Board of Education calendar as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, is to the Board of Education calendar, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Questions? It's a whole bunch of beaten times. Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Tony, you're wearing a donut straw.
Yes, especially in the morning, it's. Item C, I recommend the board approve the contract with Simply Green LLC in the amount of $27,332 for lawn maintenance as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation around lawn maintenance, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Comments?
This, this wraps up a trifecta of contracts we have worked on with landscaping and lawn maintenance. The first one had to do with the entire campuses, the second one had to do with the athletic fields, and then this one has to do with the treatment, so the first group of fields. So this will wrap us up with field stuff, okay.
Any questions? Jeff, all in favor?
Item D, I recommend the board approve the contract with D O L Solutions LLC in the amount of $50,000 for security services as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Yes, so this, we were approached by D O L about doing a safety audit of the Bestave Hills High School, and they provided that information for us back in the fall. Did such a nice thorough job, and we've asked them to look at the other facilities for us, middle schools and elementary schools, and so this contract would, we'll put a motion at next minute.
Questions? All in favor?
Item E, I recommend the board approve change order number eight with Blaylock Building Company Incorporated in the amount of $36,626 for renovations for our new middle school package. B, building addition and renovations as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Questions?
This one largely has to do with some kitchen work that we've had to do, including the floor.
Yes, with the floor?
Yeah.
We discussed this first, last time around, time to do it now, so when you have students in there. All in favor?
Aye. Item F, excuse me, I recommend the board approve the textbook adoption list as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second? Questions? And Steve, you usually like questions on the textbooks.
I do.
They were physics.
But you've already got them to answer.
It was physics, yeah, okay, yeah.
That's right. But yeah, the way the people should just get all dressed up. Alright, all in favor?
Item seven is our financial statement. Ms. Brown?
Good afternoon, I have provided the April 2019 financial statements and check register for your review. A few items from the April 2019 budget comparison report that I want to know. Our local revenues from property tax collections are at 94% of budget as of April 30th compared to 100% at this time last year. And total expenditures compared to budget are in line with prior year at 61%. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of April 30th, 2019.
Remind us about the difference in the percentage collection.
Yeah, the difference is a more conservative approach to budgeting revenues last year that allowed us to reach our, our budget much sooner in the year. But we're still tracking right on, we're, we'll meet our budget by the, by September 30th.
So there's no longer a timing issue, is it conservative versus?
Yeah, just the way it was.
Got it. Any questions?
I recommend the board approve the financial statement for April 2019 as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Item eight, personnel, I recommend the board approve the personnel actions as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve the personnel items?
Second.
Second? Questions? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. I do want to take a point of privilege here to introduce our new principal at the Zitz Middle School, Mr. Chris Pennington is in the back there. Chris, now, welcome, party.
This is my wife Cheryl, we are just so excited to be a part of the, the dream team, we talk, we refer to it. Just tremendous opportunity, we're very blessed, and we're looking forward to being part of the Bestave City Schools family, so thank you for such a warm welcome today.
Yeah. We took Mr. Pennington to Berry just to scare him real. And he's still, he's still, you know, since that was first tense, would he still be here at 4:00? He's here and been over to the Zitz today to meet the faculty and staff there as well, so glad to have you, Chris, Cheryl, welcome.
Good to have you.
Alright, item nine, should we?
It's, it's me, have my notes on my phone, I will, it's time to elect officers and discuss member compensation. So first, is I'll entertain a motion to nominate a new president for the board for the 2019-2020 school year.
Nominate further?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will nominate, I will entertain a motion to nominate a new vice president of the board.
I will nominate David.
Has to come from this side of the record?
No, that may leave some action.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so Dr. Baker didn't think she was gonna be here tonight, and so she said, yes, she would serve as vice president, and the only other role that we could give her is the director of snacks. So I'll entertain a motion to nominate Dr. Baker as the director of snacks. And second?
Second.
All in favor? Let the record show, Dr. Baker is the director of snacks.
And our new principal is host of the school.
So submit your snack request to Dr. Baker in triple digits. It is the practice of this board to forego any board compensation despite Steve's misgivings. And I'll entertain a motion on this issue, so who would like to make a motion that this board foregoes compensation?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
No motion cares.
Do you need to leave now, I just, I just, I always trust you.
But you were gonna be a supreme overlord of the board.
So you get an office and you leave?
Didn't trust the parent.
Item 10 is a construction report, wanted to bring you up to speed with all things related to construction. Dr. Martin gave a presentation preparing for you, take it away, sir.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to, to speak with you here about all things construction going on in the system, really three projects that I'd like to pay your attention to with the help of Mr. McGee there in the back. First project, I don't know if board members can see this, but the first project that we have going on here over the summer is the, we've approved this by early February, the handicap accessible seating there on the visitor's side of the stadium. You can see timeframe for this, they actually started on the 20th, they started today with demolition of that area. If you can see here, we will have eight spaces available for visitors to view football games, other events that are taking place there at the stadium. So it started today, we have given them a very strict deadline to be complete with this project by June 25th. And the reason for that is because on the 27th, we have the 38th Annual I Love America Night at the stadium. And so we'll have that project complete and ready in time for that event to take place. But I, I think this will be a good in addition to our visitor's side, allowing those, all, all individuals to come and, and support their teams there at the stadium. Next project that I have here, moving on to our Gresham site, and, and I'm gonna throw a caveat in here real quick, is not only do I have some still shots of this, but this was our first attempt of using drone footage. So if you are prone to motion sickness, I would rather be available here, but I would just caution you to look away. With that said, this is a picture here, you can see the new addition, our classroom addition that is taking place, the Aaron Dahl Annex behind the gymnasium, as well as, you can see the fine arts building there in the rear. We're looking at anticipated completion date, first floor, we're hoping August 1st, and then second floor, we're looking at the 26th. So that's when we would have substantial completion for, for the addition. Phase two, and I'll speak to that here in just a second, that's our carpool loop playground, as well as parking lot spaces, we're gonna have that, that should be complete, substantial completion July 31st. So those are the dates that we've been provided by contractors. In terms of, I've just put down here, three key milestones that we need to hit in order, this would be mid-June, in order for us to have those substantial completion dates. You can see the first here, we have, and this is following discussion with contractor on site superintendent, Joyce and decking actually started today. So what that should allow us to do is hopefully have that roof complete, so we can start to, to dry in the facility. First floor overhead, I was told 95% complete, that was as of last Thursday. And you can see their HVAC units hung, so we're, we're hoping to have that all done by mid-June. And then the last item that we have there is permanent power, so that we can start up those variable refrigerant units. So those, those are really the three, we need to have the roof, we need to have the permanent power, we need to have the, the startup for the HVAC. So those are our three big milestones that we need to make sure we hit here mid-June, that June 11th, June 15th timeframe. So that's what we have there. In terms of Gresham, let's see, and then I put down here, and I know board members have access to this as well, but our architectural rendering of that first floor, looking at six classrooms that we should have here in the fall. Then we would move on to second story, again, substantial completion date, we're hoping to hit that August 26th would be the date that we would have access to that second story. We've been working with Architect, H P M, the workaround, moving students throughout that first floor, making sure that we have good access, and then working with the contractors as well, so.
And we're good on a contingency plan for the space?
Yes, we are. Dr. Aaron Dahl has gone through several, several phases in the contingency plan that I think is where I, Freeman and I will proceed. So I would say, just, you know, kidding aside, it's been very thorough. So we feel, we feel confident in terms of where students and staff would go, subject to where the contractor is able to finish the project. We have, what, 14 total?
Five upstairs.
Five upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then we have spaces on the end, specialty space, and then you also have second story, second floor, you're gonna use that space at the end for?
Multi-purpose, yeah, multi-purpose space, which is less that we have to relocate later, you know, so that was, that's a good thing.
And then we all, have also been working with Armstrong relocation team, they've been right there at the table with us, making sure that all of the staff along with us are with and you can start school. Alright, so this is a, a look at the campus, again, like I said before, this is our one third cap here. Who flew the drone?
I was not allowed to.
You wasn't. I thought it was on you.
It was a, let's just say it was a joint effort. Mr. McGee and I were on site, but as you can see here, so gymnasium space, we talked about the new HVAC there. This is where playground should sit further down in this area here. I know the Board of Education, Dr. Freeman spoke to the lawn maintenance, and so one of the elements that we'll need to look at, we have what's now being used as laydown, but that is the former football field there for the Gresham School. So that will need some attention as you can see. And then baseball.
It's a home builder van.
Just watch the rust. Coming back across, you can see the addition there, fine arts building, gymnasium, kitchen cafeteria space sits in between, office space, and then we have A-round, I guess is what we refer to that as, which is our third grade and kindergarten right on first floor. Alright, so we're looking at A-round, gymnasium, second and first grade in that building, fine arts here, and then our new addition here. And that's the part where it's a little tricky in terms of the drone footage. The wraparound there in the back is local carpool, that's where that will exist, and then that will come back forward. What, can you take me back just to, just real quick, if you're able to, I want to show that, make sure that's known, so that we will loop around what is going to be the playground right there, that will become parking, and then you will come straight down here on a lane, wrap it around to the front, so you will not hop back on Gresham Drive.
Is that you all standing there in the driveway?
We're trying to find a way to block that out. You know, as a former teacher, we always talk about taking risks. This is one that we did take, and we will judge whether we will do this again.
Next time, can you just wear suspenders and be James Bam?
That's right, well, we wanted to, we wanted to change it up just a little bit, so.
Will the H P O C and the gym be complete?
It is complete at this time, yes.
So the current students are benefiting from the A C U, it's got more.
Good for them.
That's right, that's right.
Been a whole month and a half before they gotta leave.
That's right, that's right. You can see here, next slide, this is our, and I'm gonna give you just, just a few statistics that go along with this. This is phase two, this is where we're talking about the carpool loop, parking, playground, and I've given these, some of these numbers before, statistics, but just skipper did a traffic study, we were provided April 1st. In March, Dolly Ridge Road, on a typical weekday, had 4,397 vehicles traveling through to that Dolly Ridge Road area adjacent to Gresham Drive. 11% of those 4,397 vehicles actually turned onto Gresham Drive, that equates to 496 vehicles, and of those 496 vehicles, 80%, or 395 of those vehicles actually turned onto campus to go to, go to Gresham School. So, in contrast of how that road has currently been used, I'm just gonna go with current enrollments, west and east, west 781 students, east 791 students. And so the traffic study that we did back in the fall, east 373 vehicles in the morning, 178 vehicles in the afternoon. And no more than 74 vehicles at any one time at 7:30 a.m. was when that, that heavy concentration was there at east. What we've been told, probably more relevant to the Gresham campus over at west, and this is on Maryvale, 573 cars, vehicles in the morning, 276 in the afternoon, 233 vehicles on campus at one time, that was about 7:30 a.m. So you can do the contrast between what Gresham is currently experiencing, Gresham Drive, as well as, you know, what we'll probably experience come fall, based on what east and west had. And we're, we're figuring that Dolly Ridge is gonna have a light student population, just in terms of numbers.
And that east side's difference is largely driven by walkers, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, is it?
It's driven by walkers, correct, people walk into school.
God, so yes.
Yes, here, well, no.
Yeah, and then you said that in Dolly Ridge, there won't be a lot of walkers.
Well, on west, yeah, we don't have any walkers at last. Yeah, that's why.
I mean, because of where we are situated, we have parents that can pick up 10 minutes early and walk their kid to their car and leave, isn't it? They can't, they can't leave, can't afford to.
And then I would just show you a rendering of the playground, Jay Dawson, who we're contacting with, and just going back, playground will sit in this space right here, so you can see the facility, new addition, drive coming around what we're referring to as the island, and then playground, which is this space here, will sit in that, that space. Actually, I think, looking out, Dr. Aaron Dahl's window from the principal's office, looking, clear view of sight right there. In terms of the Berry campus, you can see their anticipated facility renovation and addition completion date, we're looking November of 2019. And then I'll also speak just a little bit to the Columbia Road project, so Columbia Road, we're looking at December, that timeframe there. Let me just go through it one more time, so, and I know that I shared this today with Mr. Pennington, just in terms of where everyone will be housed. A building, as I'm speaking to this in the presentation, A building here, sixth grade, B building will be your kitchen cafeteria in the back, offices in the front. C building, largely eighth grade with some C T E classes, on the first floor, let's see, we'll have robotics, and then family consumer sciences down there. In C building, D building, we have our media center, some classrooms in this space here. E building is the mural building, and that's where we'll have seventh grade with some C T E. F building is the gymnasium, current gymnasium, and then we get into buildings one, two, and three, the third building there is chorus, part of the music building there, which is number two, band, and chorus right there together, and then our new gymnasium space off to the side. So, as I'm referencing those different buildings, that's what I'm speaking to up here. In terms of where we are, talking about Shane Lutz, A building just about complete, we have, I'm just gonna go through this, everything that we've discussed, plumbing, casework, V C T floor tile. In building A, I would say building B, offices, as we walk through, very similar to A, that's 95% complete with those projects. Freezer, cooler can sit in the kitchen, and again, that's in B building, V C T floor tile and ceiling tile sit there, actually today is when we're anticipating that to be done. In terms of roof work, we, we had a bit of a hangup there in E building, which is seventh grade, as well as some of those C T E classes, we had some structural that needed to be done, that's been complete, we're being told that by the end of this week. That's been complete, we're being told that by the end of this week, actually, May 31st, we go one more week, we should have all roofing projects done there at there, so that entire project should be completed. And then site package should be in full force and running by this Wednesday. So they're starting that process as well. In terms of, in terms of our new addition, band, chorus, and gymnasium, I'll just tell you, these pictures were taken back on the 6th, we walked around today, that wall that they're, actually both of those walls that they are currently working on in these pictures are complete. So they have quite a few masons on site laying block and we were getting close to being done with that. Actually, they're thinking that all masonry for band and chorus will be done by Wednesday of this week. Roof completion should take place, I think I mentioned that before, on or before, May 22nd, and that's for the new addition. And then masonry, 85% complete at the new gymnasium. Middle building structure is complete and contractors are beginning to install roofing systems. So that's where we are right now in terms of our new addition, what I showed you there and those on that schematic, buildings one, two, and three. All right, and those of you that may experience motion sickness, please look away. But this is a look at the greater campus back in July as well as current. But as you can see here, gymnasium, band, chorus, moving into C building here, you can see the distinction, the difference between the roof, the system there. Moving into what is B building, this all here, as well as this, is kitchen cafeteria space and then you move into offices in the front of the building and then A building here. Note the courtyard, several different courtyards there at Zitz, so it's a nice, nice big campus. We're going to flip around and view from Columbiana, coming back at the building here. A building, B building, C building, now we're looking at D building. So you can see where the media center will lie. What's nice about the media center is I was sharing with Mr. Pennington, it does have a courtyard off the media center there. In D building, coming back to the mural building here, which houses seventh grade and then the gymnasium back here. You'll note three peculiar characters there on the football field. May or may not be guided by drones. But we're looking at the stadium here, there on the campus of the Zitz. And then this area in the back, I will speak to baseball and softball, but you can see right now being used for laydown, but that area is what's going to house baseball and softball here. Heard someone say it's a big school, we're going from about 135,000 square feet to 195,000 square feet from current Zitz. So it's a big, it's a big news. Next item that I have here, and I'm two slides away from being done. So you can see Columbiana, Dr. Freeman, I think I've mentioned this before in a board meeting, but Dr. Freeman has been working with the Jefferson County Commission to get support in widening Columbiana so that we'll be able to accommodate more of the traffic flow getting onto campus. Current Zitz Middle School campus has 149 parking spots, new campus will have 224. So that's what our estimation is. It's anticipated, anticipated there'll be 7,150 feet of queuing space, just to give you an idea, about 5280 is a mile. So we'll have just over a mile queuing space and that's going to accommodate about 358 vehicles. So just to give you an idea, if you look at current Zitz right here and the yellow vehicles staggered at current Zitz coming out, that's about 1,900 square feet. So that gives you an idea of comparison between what we're looking at and what we'll have. The one, last thing I'll say about, and you'll note this, I've got one more video to show, but I think I've mentioned this in the past, the two traffic lights that we have to the south and the middle of the Zitz campus will move to the middle and north part of the campus. And we started there where the, where the, we will start to widen the road and then where the dentist office is, where that is, that, so you'll see this light will stay, this light right here will be moved to the northern, yep, access. And then where the dentist office is between these two buildings here is where the road will start to widen. And then a picture of beautiful Stadia.
Those are played on. You know, Jennifer's married in Old School, Stadia, Steve's in Old School, Stadia, I was talking to some Old School, Stadia guys, when was the last time we had like elbow room in any of our facilities? You know, and when we're done with this, we're going to have capacities at the high school, capacity at the ninth grade campus, capacity at Berry and stuff. I just cannot remember ever not, you know, saying, can we use that supply closet as classroom? Can type of stuff. So this is, this is going to be great.
Tony and I, Tony and I, you know, with?
Sorry, Wes. And old close to home was a block.
Because we're roughly, what percentage of Berry for Zitz? Like we, we don't need the full capacity, it's like a 50% number.
You're talking about the enormous capacity?
Yeah.
That's right, that's right.
And then the same for Zitz for the ninth grade, it was something over 50?
Rim to rim. Not to jump, with proper strategies when they went in. Tony and I have talked with site superintendent, they may have 75 to 100 contractors on site and you may see five, I mean, it's just.
Oh, no, it's a massive one.
Yes, so. All right, the final slide that I have here, and I just said, moving to this earlier with baseball and softball, I'm just giving you the timeframe, anticipated date, the design will be complete, we're looking at May 31st, advertisement of the project, we've started that process, pre-qualification bids on the 27th, we're looking at a proposed bid opening June 20th, bid awarded sometime late June, and then we are hoping that this will be open and complete by the end of first semester next year.
Is this all our budget?
Yes. Yes. This is grass? I'm sorry, grass field? Well, okay, we're looking at that turf.
Softball.
Yeah.
And this will ultimately be the high school's softball field? We're going to move in there or they'll stay?
They'll stay.
They'll stay in there.
I think we want the ability to have both. We've got an artificial baseball field, turf, and the ability to use it, because that is a low lying area, there've been a time or two before it's been actively underwater, that we would have an option to use it somewhere else, say, play somewhere else, that's a good thing. This is a good partnership to the city because they're losing two fields at Wald.
So they share use with them.
So they should usually have a name or plan to.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, they did, part of, part of this, it was self-taught last year, appropriate portion of that toward the work.
Okay, so the city's giving us, it's our budget, but they?
Right.
And also, I don't have any lights from this field, do you want to draw on the softball?
That's right. Quick softball.
Quick question on traffic for Dolly Ridge. I know we were looking at a turn lane or something around Rocky Ridge and Dolly Ridge for a study?
Well, we sat down collaboratively, I think the city was there, county was there, we had several, Skipper was there, several entities in the room. For the fall, what we're looking at is having three SROs on site, not looking at any addition on the Dolly Road, Dolly Ridge Road. I don't have that here, do I?
With the Dolly Ridge and Rocky Ridge intersection at the?
Yeah, not, but I'm sorry. Yeah, right.
That's right.
That's, that's part of the engineering study saying, it's been doing with the city and I don't know their timeline on it, but that's, that is at the very top of their list in terms of priority is that particular intersection, how they're going to deal with it. I will pledge to have it for you and I, say, on next floor.
I apologize. No, no, we will, just to your point, Phil, we will look to have three SROs in the morning, or I'm sorry, SROs, three, three officers there in the morning, one there as you're turning off to one Gresham Drive, they'll also be able to control that light. We'll have one down, what we're referring to is the island right here, we'll have one at the island as you turn in, and then one, this becomes a private drive, we had a conversation about that. And so one right there directing traffic back onto the loop to come back around. So that's our plan for, for that. Thank you. Any other questions, sir?
All good.
Okay.